Start with the roll call. Carrie?
I'm here.
If you could just state your name and the town you represent.
Carrie Fralino-Marlborough.
Thank you. Joe?
Joe Claddy-Hebron.
Gabe?
Gabe Marks-Hebron.
Eric?
Eric Shevchenko-Andover.
Kirsten? Kirsten? Okay, Mike?
Mike Sharon-Hebron.
Dr. Benson-Clark?
She's on.
Uh, she's on, Dr. Benson-Clark. Mary?
Mary Koczewski-Marlborough.
Thank you. Sue? All right, and Heather?
Heather Summer-Hebron.
Great, and I am Mike Morris, and I represent Hebron. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Uh, I would like to ask the Board if there are any objections to going slightly out of order to- uh, to tonight's agenda. I'd like to push items six, seven, and five forward and address them prior to item three, which is public comment. If there is an objection, I'll make a motion to do so and put it to a vote. If there's no objection, I'll carry on. Eric?
No objection.
No, not you, I'm sorry. Any objections?
Somebody joining.
Okay. Hearing no objections, uh, I'll push forward the Board Chair Report. There's no adequate way to describe the disgust and disappointment and anger I felt when informed that what appears to be a news was discovered in our high school boys' locker room on Friday. This behavior and the dog was associated will not be tolerated, period. I've lived in the region eight districts for 20 years, and this behavior is in no way, shape, or form representative of our communities. I'm confident the Board, our community leaders, and our community at large share this view and had a similar reaction to that news. This happened. Law enforcement was contacted immediately, and as reported, significant resources have been brought to bear in the investigation. Our superintendent communicated everything known as soon as practicable to keep our parents, our students, our staff, and our community informed. Our entire administration has been and will continue to do everything necessary to support our students, our faculty, and our staff. They continue to assess the needs, and I'm confident that they will adjust and apply resources as appropriate going forward. The Board stands ready to assist in those efforts. The most appropriate steps next are to support those who need supporting, continue to cooperate with law enforcement to find out who did this and hold them accountable, and get on with the uniting goal of educating kids rather than letting the goal of this kind of contemptuous act, division, fear, and intimidation succeed. Mr. McNamara continues to be the appropriate point of contact and the node to communicate information, next steps, actions, resources, and activities in the region school, a region eight school district response. So, good evening. As the Board knows, I sent a message to the entire school community regarding the situation from last week. I am not able to make any further public comment on the matter at this time due to the ongoing police investigation. It is important, however, to reiterate the word that words or actions spreading racism, discrimination, or hateful ideologies will not be tolerated in our schools. RAM is committed to creating and maintaining an educational environment that is physically, emotionally, and intellectually safe and free from forms of harassment and discrimination. The district's focus at this time is to ensure that the students and staff who have been affected by last week's event are provided with a safe si- a safe space at school and with all the supports we can offer. We also have begun connecting with community resources to work on developing a long-term plan that addresses this issue through education, training, and community conversations. Our priority continues to be the well-being of the entire RAM community. This concludes my report. We'll start with the first student. Ava?
We all have our own thoughts and feelings about this situation. But it's not a change of the course. I understand the thoughts you have, including the camera and the history of it. I just think we're around absolutely bizarre. However, I want to take this opportunity to offer my attention to another different side of the conversation. RAM is a very small, but interesting school. But they sometimes feel a bit vulnerable. But it's just that they want to see that times are needed. I want something to be tried to stop us. Many of our students here are as lucky as many other students. There's a lot of awareness as how we as students have contributed to these decisions. This is not a game to have as a community, as a community, from the possible experience. To open more conversations, educational conversations about diversity and inclusion. It truly is a complex and hard issue, and one that most definitely has to be addressed. But I don't know, being open and honest with one another, just having a conversation may be helpful.
Thank you. Rowan?
Chair- Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not sure where she spoke from, but it was difficult to understand her, and I- I- I think I did. I really strained to understand her, but if there's anything that can be done on that end to make things clear, that would be helpful because everybody has important things to say, and we certainly want to listen.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, hey, uh, Rowan, why don't you come down here and make your statement down here? It's a little closer to the mics that are posted for the... There's just like... You go into town, it's here.
So, good evening. Obviously, and this is gonna go throughout the night, we've already heard of this already, but I'm- my heart goes out to all of those who were affected by incidents that occurred on Friday. It's like everybody said, it's not tolerable here at RAM, and I know for a fact that RAM is also the school that is able to get through this together as a community because regardless of what happened on Friday, I know that there are many pe- the- the staff members and everybody at RAM knows how to come together to help, you know, get people through these times. So, I just wanted to keep that out there because, I- I mean, I've been going to RAM for four years now, and I know that RAM still continues to be a pleasure to be in, and I- and I genuinely love this community. So, and I believe that this is a community that is successfully gonna be able to get through this. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rowan. Thanks. All right, if we could, going forward, we're gonna just try to do the best we can with folks on the end. If you have a comment, you're gonna need to speak up a little bit so we make sure we pick it up for the hybrid meeting. Okay, thank you for indulging me in that order change. Item three is public comment. You bear with me for a moment. Hebron-Andover-Marlborough, community engagement and attendance at public- Word of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. This time, I would like to open up to anyone present to step forward if they'd like to make a public comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Rowan. I'm African, and I'm a student in my school. I'm African here. And I'm a dear student of color. And I'm a student with a class of March and May. And I'm terrified of all of this. So, I'm very upset that I'm here. I'm very worried about my future. While it's been really happening in this school, I'm terrified of that. Over the past couple of years, I've been concerned about issues regarding the George Floyd murder and the death of my husband. I compare everything sadly to accidents in the schools to my local neighborhood. This is a big difference. While there are concerns about racial violence and the gossip issue of race again, whether it is, doesn't matter. While I realize that they're going up against the issue that I mentioned, it does not give them the courage to start a new relationship. While we do not have the same calculation, we still do have the wrong of saying the wrong thing. Are you assuming you hear a clear message about the pressures? And not just the recent, it's happening right now. There are people who are depressed right now. What worries me is that there is a building opposite this flower gate. I am worried that not a person in the world should question it, given the noise we've inspired from political ideologies. Tap that information to be more helpful. Certainly, despite the impact that it has given, if it's not a case of evidence, whether it's a form of abuse. Hello, we need to be aware of this, and not transparent. I am worried that maybe just the beginning, why not till the front? We need to make this happen. I can't be a one-time executive director of a college that just returned to their class. They won't remember what they said, not me. But we need to integrate them into the fabric of culture. And it's being integrated into the current environment. I think that maybe, maybe ethnic representation of parents, or getting integrated into education. And using thorough, meaningful, and the other part of the mission is this. I know that some of us in our borough have been treated as a culture, we'll be back here. Talking about the message in a month, a year, two years, but looking back, and I know there are problems.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Javie, and I'm a resident here as a graduate of the year. My job is to graduate from RAM. Sounds like I could have been a manager of the university and equity or code. On behalf of the college, all calls and students, we will all work for everyone. We feel for our students, especially the students of color and their parents. Having news is a symbol of hate and intimidation. It is a shame that it's so tragic and tragic. It is a plague of hatred, but the fact that it's in our school is hurting, and the weight of our hearts. Usually, not a good song to find a safety piece, rather than a middle or a ritual, and a good one. The student behavior is a symptom of a problem. The underground existence of sex and the need to be uncovered and addressed. Someone is submitted to work with RAM leadership to identify and move forward. On the many recommendations we have offered, and creating a culture that is welcoming and respectful to all, that increases the number of teachers of color, that celebrates diversity, that teaches the wholeness and comprehensive system of all people, including the level of supplies and contributions may have been anymore, and that deals early, you know, badly with any incidents of A or discrimination. We also find it a parent and community better to learn more about code and to become involved.
Yep.
My name is Katie Donadio, and I am a resident of Hebron itself. And I want to thank you for the service. I know that you guys are putting out a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate what you're putting into this. I want to say that as a member of President of Code, the Coalition for University Equity, as Donna had said, we are outraged by this incident. My thoughts are about the Board and how its conversations and deliberations about certain topics send a message to the greater community. So, uh, as a member, I've been with the Board for years. I want to urge everybody to, on the Board, to educate yourself about the increased risk of mental health issues and suicide for kids that are marginalized on a daily basis. And I'm saying this because it's a reality that every school has kids who are marginalized, and I want to just bring forward that when somebody wears- wears a shirt or- or wears a certain symbol, just bring support to somebody that that shouldn't that shouldn't be thought of as racist act or- or a political statement. But these kids are marginalized. They need to feel supported and cared about, and I- I guess encourage the Board to, in fact, learn about how best to handle these kinds of situations. Because the conversation, they triple down. These conversations, we even have an executive session tonight. That will hold in place, like, it's not just in these- in this area. The kids are hearing this, and it's hurtful, and it continues to oppress them. I'd like to model, I'd like to all see if it's a model they that is learning this lifelong endeavor. Bring in these specialists on how to deal with this. Can't do business as usual because that's not working for us. We have to bring in people who this is their job to bring, to talk about race on a daily basis. Bring in people who are gonna be able to educate our administrators. The Board, people, please learn first so that you can carry the- you can carry the message loud and clear, the- the truth, so that everybody is understanding what's affected of this district. It starts up here. This weekend alone, I've heard several kid parents, concerned parents, that think their kids are receiving racial- are experiencing racism on a daily basis. I want to... I just, I just want to reiterate that it's important for- for the Board to understand that this is not a one-time deal. Like, this has gotta be a long-term solution. As Donna mentioned, that it's- we've got the police involved, but then it's obviously disciplined and programmed. But we've got to put the bigger culture, the bigger problem, and bring in people who can help us as a community solve this, work on this. And as Yelena mentioned, integrate it into daily conversations that's gotta happen.
Amy, can you and others in addition submit your comments? Because most of us at home and lots of folks I don't even know, we're having trouble, and we really want to hear what's being said. So, we will listen, and we are listening, but can you and Mrs. Jolly and others also submit written comments if- if- if possible?
I didn't- I didn't write anything, so I'm not sure that that's helpful.
We'll- we'll get a transcript of it, and what I think going forward, what I'll ask is for people to use this microphone over here, only because it's a little closer to the microphones to pick up things on the hybrid, but thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else present for a public comment? Please, sir. If I could, ask you to step all the way over here just because it helps pick up the hybrid making like...
No problem. Jerk was getting in here. How's everybody doing?
Could you just say your name and where you're from?
A minute, I'm old. That was a walk.
Eric would have come to have my close to the face.
Evening, everybody. My name is Rodney Alexander Jr., First Vice President of the Wyndham-Willemannic Branch of the NAACP. And I'm here today, tonight, to speak on the situation of this event. I should I say horrific situation that took place with the news hanging in the locker. This is 2022. When's it gonna stop? When's it gonna stop? Saw someone else remarks online about, uh, Jeff the News doesn't mean anything. Well, the person of color, especially black, means lie. It's one of the most symbolic discriminatory tools for racism in America. I'm gonna tell you why it's important. Because once it's called, it's just a matter of time before it's used. In June of 88, Stratford, Connecticut, it's Corski Air Threat. Had a couple of white guys throw rope around. Tried to choke me out and said it's how we used to get rid of your kind back in the days. Some article said the rope's not important, news not important. That's why I'm here today. We have to figure out a way to stop this. Racism is old, and it surfaced again, and we have to figure out a way to fix it for good. Now, as First Vice President of the Wyndham-Willemannic Branch, I am more than willing to sit and talk with any staff, president, superintendent, principals of any school, you know, coming with some sort of educational plan, diversity plans, so we can put a stop to this. I'm very easy to find. Our website, you can check me out there. My personal cell is 860-634-6121. We need everybody still to put a stop to this. This particular branch of the NAACP, the Wyndham-Willemannic Branch, is one of the most diversified branches in the state of Connecticut. We work very hard in a lot of schools because we cover from Coventry through Thompson. And we're well-known up here, but it's obvious we're not known enough here. So, I'm here tonight to let you know that the Wynd- Wyndham-Willemannic Branch is willing to whatever it takes to put a stop to this. We have to put a stop to this. Because if it starts here, believe me, it's spreading, and it's gonna keep spreading, and I need your help, your help, and your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Raisbuck. I am a faculty member of the Daddy's School of Education and Associate Vice President at CUN. I've spent my 28th career in higher education and public schools, and I believe in strong public school system. I cannot agree more with what our colleague from Wyndham and Willemannic just said. What is needed right now is an immediate active response to the benefit of the community. We need community members, like our colleagues from the NOLAC, CP, and CO. We need the school board leading the way, along with superintendent, to spread this law. And it's the weapon. Simply, it is a weapon. If a villain, what would the response be in the board? We should make this as a weapon in your response. And news is also a symbol, as we've been reminded by many speakers here tonight. It is a symbol of very good, it is a symbol of hatred, it is a symbol of intolerance. It is a symbol men that combines people that they are driven to the point of difference that their lives do not have. And that is not something I am able to tolerate in my school and in my school district. This is also something that has to be acted on. The letter is a right first step. The condemnation that we heard at the beginning of the meeting tonight is a right first step. The people here sharing their stories is a right first step, but it is only the first step. Without a clearly communicated action plan, we will all witness to continued evidence of systemic racism in our town and in our schools. This calls for curricular reform. It calls for training and development of our teachers and our students. I am here for my support, and in the way that I can to identify the problems in the act of education, many can remember in just the areas, in school climate, in diversity and inclusivity, and in education with everyone involved, town people too, in these concepts. That's the only way we will drive a country in our town and in our schools is to educate each other, to learn from those who've been there before, to listen and amplify the voices of our colleagues. And to promote, we will act in a way that will ensure that we do that, and we provide an actually safe climate for our students to go to school. They cannot learn. They cannot learn if they are not safe. They cannot learn if they are not made to believe that they are menaces, that they're bound and protected in our community. This is not one tier of free teachers having left, who have signed in their classroom, or support for HETQ students, who we all witnessed over the weekend. This is me after the white education. But I don't really speak. I'm afraid I'm sick. Now, again, I find the lies of course, all of them. I know it's something that a couple of men that you didn't think you were gonna do when you ran. Was trying to address issues that are truly systemic to our society. But we haven't started, and it seems like we've started.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rose here. I'm a long-time Hebron resident, and I'm actually a real graduate from 1996. And my job is a senior this year. Two other children go for RAM. I'm here to tell you that racism is a standard that we're against forever. I'm not against 1996. Maybe a few of you here that were raised at the time. But I can tell you that I was the girl that was telling the kids, "You swear they can better fly," and getting sent to the central dock for that. So, not much has changed. In a way, when I was working for a place to raise my family, I said, "I'm gonna come back to Hebron" because I thought that that's something progressive and that we have great school systems. And I'm here to tell you that that is a big problem, and this joke's it. I don't wanna be here on my talking because everyone, everybody said their thoughts are perfect. I agree with everything everybody said. I appreciate all of you for being here. I appreciate all of you for being here. But, you know, this is really something that is different than a school, it's a community issue. When your kids are going home and you're making racist jokes, it's not funny. You know, when they're making jokes about Steve's face on Facebook, it's not funny. So, as a community, we really need to come together, realize that we are just an example for our students, for our children, for our community. And- and when we walk around, like, it's okay to drop a dead bird. It's a joke, it's not a joke. So, we all need to appropriately, I think this is a huge wake-up call, and I really, really, I just appreciate everybody for being here and for speaking up. I know there are a lot of people that are afraid to speak up. There are a lot of people that didn't want to come tonight because they didn't know how they would be viewed. Enough. We can't live in fear anymore. The people that did this far are wrong. We are not. We are the group that's right, and we all need to take a stand. This is not political, it's human rights. So, I guess, again, that's- that's really what I wanted to speak about tonight, and I do thank everybody for taking the time to be here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cole Matthews. I apologize for all the much of a voice. I am from Hebron.
I am from Hebron. I didn't prepare anything to say, but I do just want to throw something out to the group. Previously, I tried to have the Board of Selectment declare racism a public health crisis in Hebron, and that was turned down. What they chose to do was form a committee, the committee fair, committee didn't actually accomplish anything. So I would like to echo what people have already said, which is you need to take action. Don't form committees because they don't get in. This work is done. You don't need to reinvent the wheel. Use your community partners that already got out and done it. And I come from a rugged career field, so I apologize for the quote I'm about to use. But we all need to shut our mouths and open our ears. You're all white, I'm white, most of us are white. Listen to the people who live this. I'm Jewish. When I was a kid, pennies were thrown in the hallway, obnoxious, but I was never hurt. Talk to the people who live this every day, listen to the people who live this every day, and take it to heart.
Good evening. My name is Stole Strager and I am a member of the NAACP. Uh, I would just like to say I was born in the fifties and from Birmingham, Alabama. So this is nothing new to me. And only thing I think that has changed is that the good has come off, you know? And I just watch out the way I'm standing here in my institution. This is a taught thing, you know, this just don't continue after you taught generation, generation, generation. So we need to stop now, you know, we need to stop now. In the fifties, and I'm still witnessing this, and the only thing that's a cover of now is how I'm playing this. The other thing I would like to, I would have liked to see a student who was affected on the board tonight, you know, sitting under a rug and controlling that.
Good evening. And, um, I'm just speaking tonight in my, I'm a little concerned with this. And I certainly don't want to take away from any of the wonderful comments that I have, which I fully support and agree with you today. The only thing I want to say is I want to emphasize the point that this stuff again is inside this, this is a large community issue. And I think that this is something we can't continue to see under the rug and say it's one incident, problems solved. It's very clear that there's an undercurrent throughout your communities, especially on, on any state of Connecticut. Um, and so I think we have a lot of work to do to live up to the ideal of being an inclusive, welcoming community. And I think that more relationships like code or a speech work with them more frequently to reach the ideal. Thank you.
Is anyone else present? Would like to give a public comment? Okay, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over. Is there, are there people online that would like to present public comment? Eric, I'm gonna rely on you to let me know. If you're online and you'd like to present public comment, either raise your digital hand or just go ahead and speak out. None? Okay, I'm sorry, there's one. What's his name?
Catherine Stevenson.
Catherine Stevenson.
Catherine Stevenson, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Um, thank you so much for having us. I'm sorry I could not be present in, uh, in person. Is my voice clear?
Fine.
Yes, I'm, I'm online Catherine, and yes, you are clear. Thank you.
Okay, um, I, last week's events prove that RAM's environment and culture does need to change. I also echo, support and agreement with previous people's statements, um, one hundred percent. My presentation today has a slightly different bent. Um, I feel that the climate needs to be safe, not only for students, but also for all teachers, faculty and staff. Um, my concerns today are twofold. One is about drugs intimidation and, um, on the bus, um, from students toward other students and toward the bus drivers. This continues to be a problem and it has been brought up to, uh, principals and never to superintendent, um, but to principals with essentially no effect. Um, my other concern is, um, I am saddened and very concerned to hear of the resignation of an excellent teacher who is currently in an administrative role in the STEM and business area, Ms. Jackie Weatherall. She has experienced verbal threats, been called vulgar names and experienced physical intimidation, including shoving by students. Um, apparently it took five days for superintendent and principals to address the problem. And apparently the students received one day of in-school suspension. That is not a zero tolerance policy for maintaining safety. Um, what's, what's the comment? In the letter, RAM is committed to creating and maintaining an educational environment that is physically, emotionally and intellectually safe and thus free from forms of harassment and discrimination. Teachers need to feel safe. She's resigning. She's a huge, huge loss to the school. Some, something has to be done about this, as well as the drugs and the persistent intimidation and threats um, from kids on the bus, to the bus drivers and to other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online for public comment? No. Okay, uh, just one more time inside. Did anybody come in? Okay, I'm assuming no. Look, I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to be here. I think some folks came from farther away than others, and I, I know sometimes people took a lot of time out of their own personal lives to come here and share. And I appreciate the fact that you did that. Um, the board appreciates the fact that you did that. Thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So we'll pick up with the rest of the board agenda. Item four, is it addition and deletion of agenda items? This time I'll open up to the board. Are there any items to be proposed for addition or deletion from the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna assume that there are none. We've already covered items five, six and seven. This brings us to, uh, item eight, the consent agenda. Uh, the approval of the minutes, uh, from October seventeenth, which is enclosure eight point one. I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the minutes from October seventeenth. Eric, is there a second? Heather, thank you. Do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that carries unanimously.
I, no, I abstain.
Thank you. Okay, item eight point two, the resignations of Todd Helig, enclosure eight point two A. Jacqueline Weatherall, enclosure eight point two B, and Nadia De Roy, enclosure eight point two C. Is there a motion to accept the resignations of Todd Helwig, Jacqueline Weatherall and Nadia De Roy? Joe, is there a second?
A second.
Heather, thank you. Uh, we'll do again, do a voice vote. Is there, uh, any, uh, I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
Do you want to say anything about this? No. Okay.
I would like to hear some discussions since I brought it up.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I think that was, um, out of order at that point. That was.
If you could speak up, that would be, sorry.
That they wanted to have discussion.
Yeah, this is basically about the board discussion. Is there any board members that have any discussions? Depending on the motion in front of us. Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna move on to the vote. I'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
That's, it, Mike, I, I apologize, but you need to ask for abstentions. I abstain.
I'm, I'm sorry, hold on one second. Dr. Benson, I can't hear what she's saying.
She said she's abstaining.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry, it's, uh, difficult to hear you tonight. It's not our normal, uh, venue, so we're making do with, uh, sound, which I appreciate the people that put this together for us. But I know it's not the, it's not our normal, um, situation. Um, retirement notification, item eight point three, N. Robert Schweitzer, enclosure eight point three A. Uh, which there's, is there a motion to accept the upcoming retirement of Nancy Robert Schweitzer?
Some.
All right, Mike, is there a second?
A second, Doc.
Carrie, I got you. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that carries at this point.
Chair. Um, uh, uh, there is a little bit of difficulty communicating tonight. I, I apologize, the sound is a little off. For eight point one, I, my vote should be yes.
Okay.
It's abstain for eight point two.
I understand. We've, I've got you captured for that. Thank you. Um, okay, item nine, Eastcon presentation.
Thank you. Uh, this time I'd like to introduce, uh, Eric Batoulis, who is the, uh, new executive director at Eastcon. Eastcon is our local rest, our, our regional educational service center that provides, uh, districts like region eight, as well as many other districts across the eastern part of Connecticut with support and services that, um, are very beneficial to us. And, uh, Eric had, uh, indicated when I met with him earlier in the summer that he was interested in coming, um, to our district and talking a little bit about what's going on at Eastcon. So Eric, thank you so much for being here and please, uh, step up to the mic.
Thank you.
No.
Try to raise it up a little bit?
Yeah, and maybe just speak up as best you can. That's great, thanks.
Uh, thank you for the invite, Mr. Eric Batoulis, who is the new executive director at Eastcon. Uh, truly a big privilege to come here before you as well. Uh, I'm in debt of gratitude to region eight, uh, as I spent a good part of my career here as a school psychologist and as a current working services. Uh, and RAM is a very special place of my part, and I'm excited to be back in the region, uh, and have the opportunity to address. And, and acknowledge the work that you guys have done for us, and the comments and the events that you're facing with are very exciting. And, uh, I know there's a strong community support in the region, uh, that we will be able to support that any way that we can from Eastcon's perspective as well. Uh, I asked to come out and speak with the boards, uh, as part of my plan of coming back into working at Eastcon, uh, and really seeing what opportunities we have to present a little bit of what we are. Um, the last few years have been a challenging time for Eastcon as far as an agency, uh, as an entity, except for the, the pressures of the pandemic, the impact that it's had, um, and so I walked into a situation with financial challenge as well, that we're working very heavily and lightly on rectifying. Um, but the bigger piece of it is really to help rebuild our relationships and restore Eastcon in terms of its place within the region that might not be noticeable to some of our communities and it's more noticeable to some of our communities that, uh, we may not have been able to be as responsive, uh, as we would like to be. And so part of my commitment in coming back to Eastcon is to be in that position where we really do, uh, cherish the opportunity to collaborate and build relationships. Uh, my own career has spent a lot of time doing that, both regionally and across the state. I've worked for Eastcon before and as, as well as a rest down in the greater New Haven area basis. Uh, and that work really has been focusing on looking for the collaborations and efficiencies that are reckoned, designed to do. And how do we present and bring forth services and supports that our district need? Uh, and particularly when we think about Northeastern Connecticut, the challenges of resources, the challenges of, uh, those networks. It is that there's a lot more pressure in our region. We're really committed to being here and being a partner to all of our districts. So, uh, I would just like to take this opportunity to, to thank you, uh, both for the opportunities that were given to me before as a faculty here at RAM, um, but also just to, to reintroduce us to you as board, uh, and any opportunities that you might see for us to collaborate with you, uh, and services that we might be able to provide to the region. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, so much. I've, uh, appreciated working with Eric, getting to know him, and, uh, certainly look forward to our continued partnership. Please. So item number ten for the agenda this evening is, uh, we put together, the administrative team or the middle school and the high school put together a presentation that we would like to do on our twenty-one, twenty-two assessment data. So I'm gonna introduce, introduce Dr. Sarusi from, uh, the high school and, uh, Dr. Brenzgill from the, uh, or sorry, I got that back. Dr. Sarusi from the middle school, Dr. Brenzgill from the, uh, high school, who we're gonna talk a little bit about, and, uh, Chris and Bethany as well, so. Yeah, Eric, you're gonna put it up. You don't have the presentation.
We got time, get it.
Yeah, oh, hang on, I'll share it with you. Actually, do you got, Mike, can you share it?
Yeah.
I apologize to those online, if you just bear with us, we're just trying to bring up the presentation here. Just give us a moment.
Um, so I'm Bethany Pomerance, I'm one of the principal at the high school. I'm sort of just gonna go over our assessment data for last year. We'll start off with the high school. Um, so this is pretty much how we test our students every year. Um, you can see the breakdown by high school. We, we do grade nine, ten, eleven, eleven does the SAT in March as well. And we have the SS. Um, we have AP exams that some students take. Um, but not all.
Middle school, we have everybody. Grade three on group grade eight, um, we take a smarter doubt, it's definitely happening by the darts for grades seven, eight in spring. The next generation science assessment is also given only to grade five, grade eight and grade eleven students. That is also in the spring, and then we do give the grade eight PSATs in October. Just to go a little further, one of the things that we are, will do with the presentation is we also have referenced our DIRD, which is our district reference group based on the Connecticut State Department of Education. They sort of categorize towns in similar socioeconomic, similar, uh, looks about themselves, so to speak. And on the slides, on the slide that we have in front of you, you see that Andover, Barthamstead, et cetera, through District nineteen are members of DIRD-C, which we are also a member of. I will also tell you that some of the data you'll see for the, for the middle school later on does not include a couple of these towns because they do not have grade seven or eight. Also, some of them, if you have less than twenty members in a class, they do not report the data on the slide. So just to give you that sort of preemptive look.
Same applies for the high school. We have, you know, far less, um, difference in our DIRD that we're able to call during junior actually. Um, so we tested, um, our ninth grade students in, uh, March, April last year. And you can see from the score that they, you know, performed well above the state average both years. Um, so over half of our students reached both benchmarks. If you look at the state average, um, it was about twenty-two percent hit both, um, so we're well above that. But you can also see there's a slight decrease from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, and last year. So if you think to ten, um, similar results for us for our tenth graders in March last year, performed well above the state average. Um, more than half of our students meeting both benchmarks, which is well above. More than half of our students meeting both benchmarks, which is well above the state average. And did have that slight decline from 1018 to 1016 is our average score over that year, which I think to some degree we attribute to COVID and just part of that process for kids to come back from that. Next slide. We also had the SAT last year, so we did that on the SAT School Day on March 22nd, which most schools in the country do that day. So you can see our scores compared to the state average in red there, so we're well above that. So doing very well. And this is the DIRG data for last year. So if you look at all of the, you know, some neighboring districts that fall in the same category with us, we are third out of all those districts. So that's, you know, I feel pretty confident and feel good about that. And, you know, it consistently scored high after for the SAT. Next. So this is the data for the SAT over the past three years. You can see since the pandemic, we've had a reduction in scores since 2020, but that is actually a statewide trend. So if you look at the gray, you can see the same decline for each area. EBRW is evidence-based reading and writing. Sorry, I mentioned that before. So we used to call reading and writing before. So as you can see, you know, slight decline of a thing that we're going to be addressing. Next slide. With NGFS, Next Generation Science Standards, we just have all of our level greater on five curriculum as a fairly new test that came out in 2019. We scored nine out of 17. Out of, we're sort of focusing on the percentage of our students who are proficient. So, but if you look at the numbers, you can see we're really close to the ones above us, and we don't have a far way to go to move up significantly. And our science department has worked diligently to improve their science stipendations, they're rewriting curriculum, designing new performance assessments, utilizing practice tests in class. So these are tests that we administered last year. We did 24 offerings. We had a lot of students taking AP exams, pretty diverse offerings as well, and we continue to add more each year. So for the AP data, we had 385 test questions. We had many students get more than one AP exam. The number of students who scored a 3, 4, or 5 on those tests were 282, which gives us a, you know, success rate of 90%. So 90% of the kids passed the AP exam, if you want to call it that, they get credit for it. And then 87.5% of our statistics were higher than the Connecticut average scores on those AP exams. Do you have any questions about the high school data? Before we move on to the middle school?
So as I said before, we give the, every year we've been giving the PSAT-A right around the end of October, November. We have four years of data, and as you can see, did take a slight decline going into COVID. Coming out, we're hoping we're starting to see, build back up a little bit. The bottom here, the benchmark score is benchmark for PSAT-A, PSAT-T9. So 390 on the evidence-based writing, or the ELA, if you call it, is 390 for that standard, and 430 is the maximum. So one of the things we look at is us compared to the state. Our scores are, you know, it's well above. There are different districts that use the PSAT-A. If you ask me any, I couldn't. They just give us an overall number around 40. We're still waiting scores from this year. Looking at, over the years, we go back and pitching a smarter balance, we look at our smarter balance scores over the years, the state percentages are in parentheses, and you'll see that we are higher than the state average. But at the same time, we also notice, you'll notice there, when you go to 2015, 16, 17, the different cohorts, 18, 19, and then 2022, there is one set of scores that are missing. That was deemed non-comparable by the state. State does not report it. And it was 2019, 20, actually 2021. Yeah. So we are, we're looking, we're looking to start post-COVID. It's using sort of this as a benchmark to move up, obviously. And you'll see that it's reflected in where we fall within our DIRG, within DIRG-C. So Math 7 and Math 8, when you look at the numbers, you'll see, you'll even notice here that there's a difference in the number of towns in each one. And that's because based on the number of students, a lot of times, students in the district. Just to give you an example, we were curious, like Salem has 30 kids, Columbia has around 28 or 30 kids as well. Small numbers that are being reported, but we fall pretty much right in the middle in each one. And the same true, it's true for the human family darts. We are right in the middle. Again, if you go two percentage points up, you know, you put us more towards the top, the top half, but still, it's something that we're working on. Moving this data to inform us going forward. The next generation science, we actually, our science, eighth grade science, are a little more towards the top. SIS overall in this score. And it is again, we are looking at, we actually have been working on professional development over the last couple of years on the NGF standards, and we are in the process of looking at. A big question we always ask, you know, high schoolers, you know, what do you do with all these numbers? We know that numbers don't define all students. We also know that a lot of times we look at these scores and we'd say, okay, what are some of the underlying issues that we, we challenge us educators to help our students move forward? So here's what we do with it. I mean, we use it for goals, both school, district, strategic plans. We try to tailor our goals to help us using the data to inform us. We identify any critical areas that are skills that students need to work on. The biggest ones we've found over the years seem to be pretty much the same. Critical thinking and problem solving, algebraic reasoning, words, content, English conventions, I won't go on and on. But those seem to be big heavyweight ones that we continuously. And part of it is also working with our sending camps, which every year we do have a conversation with our math and English colleagues and the sixth grade teachers. They'll come up and talk to us here at Ram. They talk with coordinators and that thing. We do provide individual feedback to students for the data about their strengths and areas that they could improve on. The PSAT-A is a classic one. We actually spend a few days, our guidance staff, our school counseling staff will work with the team. Actually, teams work in their advisories, have the students look at their scores and learn how they can access online, sort of a self-help tutorial on Academy to work on the areas, their areas of weakness. And this is available to all students who sign up to college board. We also use the data ourselves, both middle, high, to identify students, areas that need, may need, or interventions. If they needed some type of math or science or subject area. And we also use the plan for professional development. This year's topic has been project-based learning, which gets a lot of the critical thinking, problem-solving skills. In addition to, we also look at the social, emotional, resilience, executive function, all these other categories to support.
Could I say something real quick? Because one of the things that we talked about when we put this presentation together was we felt it would be important to provide the DIRG comparisons. But I also want to stress, and I think Bethany mentioned this very quickly, which is, I really would ask board members to not focus too much around rankings within the DIRG. The DIRGs are created by the state, right? They're our district reference group. That's how we are compared to other districts. So instead of saying, we're being compared to a, you know, a Greenwich Public Schools or a Fairford Public Schools, it wouldn't make sense. So it's, I did ask them, and we talked a lot about this, but I just, if we do this presentation from one year to the next, you're going to see movement in the, you're going to see movement. And I just, I would ask the people to try not to get hung up too much on where we are, because Bethany said it very well, a percent, a few percentage points can move you up and down. And it's just, we wanted to pride it for as a reference for board members, but I just, I hopefully it doesn't become a center of focus for when we talk about our data. Thank you.
May I add to that, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay, and Dr. Sarusi and those who have known me for years are going to know that I actually want a CS score as high or better than our DIRG-A friends. So it's fine we're in DIRG-C, and it's fine we're using this, and I certainly understand this, but, but we really are talking about a globally competitive marketplace and workplace. And I know that our superintendent and our administration endorses that well. But I mean, as we know, we're looking at a global achievement gap. We're not just comparing ourselves to Massachusetts or Connecticut. And I know you know that, but I just felt like it should be said again.
Any other questions from the board? I actually had two. So, and I don't need an answer now, but I would, I don't need a formal answer, but I'd sure love some sort of an informal, just sort of gauge. Where do we, I think it's great that they give us kind of state comparisons, but where do we land in the country? Like, where do we land nationally? Like, what, you know, again, I don't need a presentation, and I'd sure love to anecdotally know kind of where, where, how does the state in general, and then how does Ram sort of fit into that picture? Just give us a ballpark.
I think I looked it up, and the last available data for high school was in 2019, so I didn't include it. But I can look up and see where we were historically to and sent to.
Okay. Like I said, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but it's just something that, and I think the only other thing I would say is, look, and everything else that I do, since I'm generally not the smartest person in the room, I usually try to look around and figure out who is and ask them questions. And as I look at all of these, and I'm sensitive to, to the superintendent's comments about how the DIRGs are put together and how they form and move and change. But I'd have to say, we'd be remiss if you didn't notice that Salem, and specifically District 18, sit pretty, pretty far at the top of these. And I think it would be not in the worst expenditure of time to ask somebody that works at Salem and District 18 if there's any best practices or anything that, you know, we could employ, so.
That's all.
And Mike, to our chairman, for one of your questions, and Dr. Brysgeil knows this better, better than I do, but there's actually fascinating international student achievement data. And what it shows is the top 10% of US students' score, as well as almost anyone in the world, with the exception of Shanghai, China. And it really, there, there are breakdowns by intervals of, to 10, then to 20, 30, and economically disadvantaged students. It's very, very fascinating, and you could, you could get lost down that rabbit hole or whatever. But I think when our strategic planning committee convenes, that that is something worth looking at, because I do think we want global benchmarking. I mean, I know, I have a daughter who just graduated college, and she is globally competitive, really because of Ram, for sure. So I do think that's, that's important, and that was a good question.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for putting that together. Appreciate that. All right, at this point, we're at agenda item 11, old business. The 11.1 is the discussion, possible action regarding school construction, HEAC grant application, enclosure 11.1. Colin, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I'll do my best to give the context for this. So as the board members know, we are working to apply for grant funding for a reimbursement for HVAC work that has already been completed. We've discussed this previously. There's, there's grant money that was made available. Most of the grant money that was made available for new projects, essentially what we've discovered is that those had to be almost shovel-ready, where you've gone through a very specific, arduous process, and essentially, you're ready to, you've got the funding, and then you, you can apply for the grant. It just wasn't really feasible for us to, to go after that type of grant money, but there was a small amount of money that was allocated for reimbursement. And we've had two projects that were completed, HVAC projects that were completed, within the window of time that was permissible to go for the reimbursement grant. So the challenge with this grant application that Eva and Mike Schlehofer and I discovered when we started working on it is that it's essentially, the grant application process is set up like the school construction process, where, where very specific resolutions have to be made, very specific building committees need to be made, very specific plans need to be provided and developed. All that stuff that basically is, gets you to be shovel-ready, if that makes sense. And so a lot of that stuff wasn't done for our process of the HVAC projects that we completed because of the fact that we just followed our standard budgeting process. However, one of the things that is required as a part of the grant application, specifically for the reimbursement as well, is the fact that the district adopts resolutions authorizing the superintendent of schools to apply to DAS for the grant reimbursement. So even though we've already done the projects, the projects have been completed, we still need to go through this because we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and this enables us to apply for the grant. I will say, and I shared this at a recent finance subcommittee meeting, that I don't know if, you know, this obviously doesn't guarantee that we're going to get the grant money, but it just at least, it checks one of the boxes that we're required to check. So that's the reason that there's two separate, these resolutions are coming to you today. The two resolutions have to be teased out, and there have to be two specific resolutions and two motions for two separate resolutions, because that's the way you have to do. We have to have a different resolution for each project.
Okay. So at this point, why don't we go through the, we'll work through the motions, and once the motions are made, ideally, we can go through any discussion or questions that might arise from either or both, or none. If there's any questions about that. All right, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Region 8 Board of Education accept the resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to apply to the commissioner of administrative services and to accept or reject a grant for the reimbursement of the costs associated with the installation of the completed air conditioning project that included the weight room, media center, and two health classrooms at Ram High School.
Mike, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
One second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that will carry. Second motion. Motion that the Region 8 Board of Education accept the resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to apply to the commissioner of administrative services and to accept or reject a grant for the reimbursement of the costs associated with the installation of the completed air conditioning project that included the dimmer room, head, end room, and locker rooms at Ram High School.
So moved.
Mike, Sharon, is there a second?
One second.
Heather, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion also carries. All right, the strategic plan update, 11.2. If I could, just let me just throw one, one point out. It's, I confess to being a new board chair, so bear with me. There are lessons to be learned in this. And I'm grateful to my vice chair for bringing requirements to my attention that honestly I wasn't tracking. And it is a policy item, so I appreciate the, the coaching. The strategic plan that we originally The strategic plan that we originally, that is enforced today, it's, it's available through the Ram website, there's a link to it. It was originally developed in 2017, is that right, Colin? 2017. They're generally supposed to be three-year plans to keep them relevant and, but this three-year plans end and the development of what would have been the next three-year plan landed smack dab in the middle of the COVID disruption. And so at that point, the, my understanding, the board adopted this plan to extend out five, to the five-year mark, because it was probably not practical at that point, given the uncertainties, to really kind of try to develop any sort of meaningful new plan at that point. Given, given those circumstances, we are sort of operating under an extended plan that obviously has some failings with it because it sort of addresses a time when we didn't have COVID and although I can't ever remember what that was like, to be honest with you, it's, that's a reality now. And so at this point, but it is a requirement for us to review that plan and I don't want to skip over that requirement as a board policy item. And that's why I asked Colin to actually bring this up. And so I, I think it's important to discuss, you know, kind of the current plan as it stands, but also understand that we're in a situation where we're actively, and Colin is leading the charge on this, it's his responsibility to, to develop the next strategic plan. Thanks.
So, so thank you. Yeah, you know, I wanted to focus my update really more on where we are with the next steps in developing the revised strategic plan or the updated strategic plan. There's, you know, it's, there's a five-year history with the strategic plan that had been developed by two superintendents ago. Certainly there was a tremendous amount of work that was done by the staff and the administration. You know, there was a lot of work around the skills and dispositions that were, that were critically important work because it helped fill the foundation for what we're looking for out of Ram graduates. But really, I wanted to focus on kind of where we are right now with regards to the development of a, of a new strategic plan, because that's really the process that we're about, we're getting ready to embark upon. Basically, what I've been doing in regards to updating or revising the, or creating a new strategic plan is engaging in conversations with various organizations and individuals who do strategic plan development. It's a, it's a heavy lift. There's a lot of work that goes behind the development of a strategic plan to ensure that it is comprehensive and encompasses all of the things that a district needs. I've been in communication with organizations such as Partners for Educational Leadership to discuss their strategic planning process. I've been in touch with a gentleman from Ed Advance, which is a different rest, there are different rests do different things, and a gentleman named Jonathan Costa, who's known across the state as, as a strategic planner. I've also engaged with EastCon, I know Eric has had to leave, but EastCon is another organization that does the strategic planning process. And where I am right now is trying to work with them and identify the organization that we will partner with and move forward with, with developing the strategic plan. And I would anticipate that that's going to be something that gets narrowed down and worked through within the next month or so. And then I would engage with the board, engage with community members, engage with staff, engage with administration, engage with parents, and with students to really go ahead and start the strategic planning process. So that's, that's the strategic plan that I, update that I have for you, and I can certainly entertain any questions that people might have.
Hearing none. Move on to new business. Item 12.1, policies, second reading. Just want to ask before we dive into this, I think I'm correct, second readings are, sorry, second readings drive a potential motion at the end?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I wasn't missing that on the agenda. Okay. So, second reading for item 12.1A, policy number 5, 5450, sexual harassment students. Do you want to kind of lead us through?
Yeah, I could give a quick synopsis. So board members may recall, this is, this came forward as a first read over the last meeting. This is the, the Title 9 policy. This is one that, when I came into the position and to the district, I quickly discovered that this was out of date. I will tell you that the policy as it is written is not how we would follow a sexual harassment complaint because of the fact that we're required by law to follow legislative action as opposed to outdated policy. So this, the policy that we have has been, really is following the draft model policy by Shipman and Goodwin, and I would recommend that the board adopt it as presented.
And just to be clear, that, that, this, the, the new version that we're voting on, or potentially voting on now, is reflective of the state requirements?
Correct. The new legislation, correct.
Okay. Do we need to vote on these individually? I think so, right?
Yes.
All right. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to, for the board to adopt policy number 5450, sexual harassment of students, current title, enclosure 12.1A.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mike. Joe, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. Moving on to 12.1B, 5,000 series, the improving the completion rate of the FAFSA, the newly acquired policy, which is representative of enclosure 12. Want to talk a little bit about that one for us?
Sure, absolutely. So the FASSA is the, is the Free Application for Federal Student Aid. It's something that, this is a new policy that is required for new legislation. It currently doesn't exist in our policy book. It is something that was reviewed by the high school administration, the high school guidance counselors, to make sure that it was, the language that we're presenting as far as the policy is something that aligns with the work that we're doing. And again, I would recommend that it be accepted as presented.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the item 12.1B, 5,000 series, improving the completion rates of FAFSA, the newly required policy, which is representative of enclosure 12.1B. Mike?
So moved, yes.
Moves? Heather, seconds?
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. The policy did not exist prior?
Correct.
Okay. I thought it was excellent to have that policy, so thank you for whoever came up with the idea.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, 12.1B, that motion will carry. Moving on to 12.1C, 6,000 series, the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. It's a newly, new required policy, can replace current policy 6155, which is representative of enclosure 12.1C.
Yeah. And just to be clear, we would really just assign this one to be 6155, just for clarification sake. So this is, so this is, for lack of a better term, this is a hybrid policy. And what I mean by that is, there was a, there was a policy that was in existence in our, in our policy handbook, 6155, that talked about, and it highlighted how gifted and talented services were provided to students in Region 8. And essentially, just, just to remind board members, I know I talked about this last time, we are, we are required to have a process that identifies students that are gifted and talented, but by law, we're not required to provide any services if students are identified as gifted and talented. We are very fortunate here in this district that we have programs in place, we have the inquiry team at the middle school, we have advanced placement opportunities for students who are at the middle school to take world language, high school level math. We even have situations where we have middle school students who will venture up to the high school from time to time and take classes at the high school level if they have the aptitude for a certain content area. At the high school level, we have advanced placement classes, we have honors classes, we have ECE classes. So there's a lot of opportunities for advanced placement classes for students who have a proclivity towards a certain content area. And what we've done is, the, the beginning of the new policy 65, 6155, is newly required language. And then what we did was, we, we have at the end of the policy where it says provision of services, it talks about the fact that the provision of services for gifted and talented students by the board is discretionary, which is true. That's an accurate representation of things. And we basically just say that middle school and high school students identified as gifted and talented shall be provided with educational programs at an appropriate level within the scope of the district's program of studies. And I really think that's an accurate representation of what we do. It's not all, but I will also say that we're always seeking opportunities to make sure that we're, we're challenging students at appropriate levels.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for item 12.1C, the 6,000 series, to be identified as 6155, the adoption of the equitable identification of gifted and talented students, the newly required policy, enclosure 12.1C.
Mike, clarify for me the order. I did want to briefly discuss that one. Do we give it?
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with discussing it. I was only going to just get the motion on the floor and then open it up for discussion.
Yeah. It's just, it's, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. So is, that's the proper way to do it right now? That's fine.
Yeah, well, absolutely. I can absolutely have a discussion about it. I just want to, we, we'll hold off on vote until everyone has an opportunity to weigh it if they need to.
Okay.
All right. Is there, is there a motion? Mike? Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Heather. At this time, I'll open up this motion to discussion.
Yeah. So I have a, a question, I think more than, than anything. I, after our last board meeting, I did look at it and I wrote a few notes and then I, I thought about it some more. And I guess, I think I know the answer, but I just want to ask the superintendent if he and his administrative team are confident or feel, or are comfortable with, with how it's written now that they, they can provide what is, what is needed and appropriate through whatever that might be, AP classes or extraworld languages or, so Superintendent McNamara, if you could, if you could just answer that, because I kind of came back in a circle after I wrote some things out and rethought it. So I just want to check in with you if that's okay.
Yes, I'm confident in that.
Okay. Okay. So I, I, I then am comfortable with it. I initially had, had a few questions, which I expressed at the, at the last meeting and they weren't any, they weren't doubts, they were just questions. But I think that the flexibility is there as long as we are, as, as we always are committed to that high level of education. So I don't have any further questions or discussion. I don't know if anyone else does.
Open up to the rest of the floor. Any other questions? Discussion? No? All right. Hearing none, then we'll have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion also carries. Brings us to item 12.2, the financials. I'll turn it over to Colin and Eva. Turn it over to Eva.
Okay. Can you hear me?
What?
Thank you very much. All right. So for 12.2A is the expenditure and revenue report as of October 31st, 2022. I'm projecting a net favorable position of $250,595. This is an approximate $12,916 less than I reported in the previous month.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that note, that figure, please?
The, so the net favorable position is $250,595.
Yep.
And it's $12,916 less than last, last month.
Thank you.
So as I reported last month, October 1st is the deadline for reporting official enrollments to the state of Connecticut. We are starting to receive some of the magnet and agri-science school invoices. We haven't received all of them, but the ones that we have received are being processed for payment and I'll have more information in next month's meeting. The pupil services department is closely monitoring the expenditures and ensuring that they adjust for any changes with their students' IUPs that get processed along the way of the month. The capital improvement fund is currently focusing on the HVAC project, which has been finalized, and $20,200 is available at the end of that project. That's good news. The retention pond survey was completed the week of November 7th. The results of that survey are being shared with the engineering firm and the construction documents are being developed based off that survey. The irrigation well replacement has the approval of the health department and as of the date of this memo, is currently awaiting approval from planning and zoning to approve the location of the site. Update, the site has been approved and they actually had a backup site approved just in case. Capital non-recurring fund. Unfortunately, at the time of writing this memo, there's still no update on getting that close out and unfortunately, there still is no update as of today. I am happy to answer any questions at this time that the board may have. Okay. So 12.2B, it's the food service monthly sales and expenditure reports. So we've had a little bit of confusion with the state of Connecticut and providing us some guidance, but I'll get into that in a minute. So the report that is attached or as part of the packet, it shows the, it's the income statement and it shows that we're currently running at a loss of $30,737.47. At the time of writing this memo, we were awaiting the supply chain branch, the second allocation of it, which we just received today, which is $25,000, or shy of $25,000, but not too shabby. Also had received or utilizing the smart funds. So we had about $182,000 worth of allocation in smart funds. The smart funds are the funds that were provided to each district that wanted them to continue the free meals for breakfast and lunch for students. So today, we've spent about 93, well, not today, that's about October 31st, we spent So this is where we get to the confusion part. So originally, the state of Connecticut said smart funds need to be utilized for providing free meals to our students. And so everybody was set to provide free meals to students. Unfortunately, they didn't divulge what would happen in partial month. So the next set of guidance was that we can't do partial month. We can only do a full month of meals and the rest of the money can be used for equipment purchases. As of the date of this memo, that now has been redacted. And so now we have to spend the money on free meals. We still cannot do a partial month. So now there's a question for guidance to the Board of Education on how, but we can do partial, but we have to fund the rest.
But we don't have to. We don't want to.
Let me read the language, please. All right. So I copied and pasted the language that was provided to us. So based, because all smart funds must be used to support meals free of charge for students, districts have three options. The school food authority may continue to offer meals free of charge to students with their remaining smart fund balance for a partial month. And if the SFA, which is the district, has excess funds, more than three months' operating costs, the SFA may use excess funds from the SFA's nonprofit food service account or other allowable funds, donations, general fund, et cetera, to continue meals free of charge for students for the remainder of the month. The school food authority, or number two, option number two, the school food authority may continue to offer meals free of charge to students with their remaining smart fund balance for a partial month and any free meals on the day after the smart funds run out. So in our case, I'm estimating that our smart funds would run out on January 10th. So on January 11th, we have, so in that case, you're, on January 11th, we would have to start charging for meals. And then number three, if the SFA determines that they do not wish to use the remaining smart fund balance, these funds would be forfeited. So that is the discussion that we would like to open up to the board. We brought this to the finance subcommittee and the chairperson of the finance subcommittee wanted to know how much it would cost to wanted to know how much it would cost to feed to the June 30th of the last day of school. So based on the calculations through, this was done on November 15th, it's $2,252.52 per day. And again, these are estimates based on the number of meals that we serve. We are going to have enough to get us through January 10th of 2023. And so that'll leave 99 days left for the school year after January 10th. So we would be looking at a total of $223,047 to, to finish out the school year for the students to have free and reduce our free meals till we get out of school. If we stopped feeding students on December 31st, I'm sorry, so for January 10th, we would have $13,206.15 that would be exhausted as of January 10th. If we wanted to continue to the end of January or January 31st, the district would have to pay in $31,844.48.
Okay. What, so why don't we, why don't we open this up for discussion? I actually had the benefit of being able to participate with the finance committee and so I heard their discussion. I think some of the rest of the board that was not, that is not one of the standing board members for the subcommittee probably have not heard these numbers nor had an opportunity to weigh in on that discussion. So I think, you know, probably first was most relevant, maybe ask the finance committee chair to weigh in and maybe just provide input based on that discussion first. Dr. Benson Clark, could you do that for us, please?
Yeah, sure. Just, just for the board's information and knowledge, our business manager and superintendent followed everything they needed to, including the kind of what felt like changed guidance on using this money. I did pose the question, knowing we probably could not do it, but asking what would it cost for us if we were to self-fund and to provide free meals for the, for the entire school year? So that I certainly appreciate that our business manager took the time to do that. And as, as we heard, it's a pretty substantial cost. And, and my thought, everyone, was that perhaps not so much for this year, but maybe more for next year, we could get information from families in a meaningful way. If, you know, if, if assistance with food would, would be helpful to them. We know that there are the appropriate channels or typical channels, I should say, of filling out the state paperwork. We also understand that that is confidential, but we, I, I, I think I just want to make sure that, you know, in the committee, I, we all care that our, our community is safe and well-fed and, and, and just all of that. So I did, I did ask Eva to do this kind of extra, you know, good amount of work to determine that amount of money. It is, it is substantial. So I, I appreciate that she did that. Does, does that make it clear, Chairman Morris?
Yeah, that was perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So I'll just, just to, you know, pile on, so as part of the discussion, you know, it's not ideal to run out of funds in the middle of an odd, in an odd period, only because it's something that's new, it's something that we're going to have to communicate definitively to the, to the community. We don't, certainly don't want to have a certain stance where a student shows up and, you know, frankly, it'll be my kid, that I probably forgot to give him lunch money that day or, or to repopulate his account. I think the thing that I'm very confident is that I, we've had this discussion in the past, certainly over some of the COVID period to ensure that the food security with students, not only making sure that a student got something to eat, but that there was no stigma attached with the need to get something to eat with, in a circumstance where they weren't necessarily had money in their account or whatever. And I'm very confident, based on the explanation of the procedures and the process that goes on, it's transparent to anybody that might be in the close proximity. And at that point, really, the only two people that are aware of the circumstances of how things get paid for is the person at the register and the student that actually brings the lunch up. And there's a, there's an opportunity to make sure that that student gets some, gets fed. So that being the case, I think, you know, Dr. Benson Clark's point was, you know, what does it really cost? And so I appreciate Eva bringing those, those figures to us. It certainly didn't hurt to ask the question, but at this point, then this is just my own personal input as an individual board member, but at $2,000 a day with 99 days left in the year, I certainly don't think that there's an opportunity for us to self-fund 223K. And I think even to discuss the January, carrying it from January 11th through January 31st, $31,000 of unfunded or unbudgeted, certainly in a circumstance where our current net favorable position is, while, while it's, you know, positive, you know, that's not something that I think we can rely on, given that it's not, this is not programmed into the budget. So I think the only thing, the only other thing that did come out of that meeting that I thought was appropriate was there was some discussion about whether or not to end this funding early, as in, you know, we go away for our December break, we communicate to the students that, you know, that funding ends when the community, when the school break starts and then we start with the, when the break comes back. Look, again, this is my individual board member perspective on this, but I, while I am completely sensitive to the idea that it's, it's not necessarily ideal to have to communicate it that way, if I were to take a step back and manage this in my own household, I would certainly not give back any days' worth of any funding for groceries at my own home. So I'm not sure that I feel confident in committing, in recommending to the board that, that, I'm, I'm not confident in recommending to the board that we sub, that we turn back what, what amounts to what, eight or nine days, Eva, worth of funding?
It would be six school days in January.
Six school days, because I think, you know, there are households in our region that that those six days matter. And so I would, I can't think of a good reason why we would, why we would give money back, frankly. So at that point, I'll certainly open it up to the board for any other discussion. Please.
Do I have to?
Yes, please.
I guess my question is, if we end it 31st and you come back to school, can we still use those smart funds for the students who are getting reduced lunch for the full month? It's all or nothing?
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we're budgeted to manage the.
Okay, so let me take a step back. So if the paper application or the direct certification process, the family has completed that, they have funding, so they're, they're eating at a reduced rate. So you either eat for free if you filled out the application and qualified, or you eat at a reduced rate and you get that dollar amount, whether it's 40 cents or 90 cents, I'm uncertain at this point in time, they can get the meal for that dollar amount. But we cannot add any more money for that reduced person. And the smart funds, you have to use it for all students. You can't just, you can't covertly identify a student.
It's actually, so essentially two separate pots of money.
Right.
But it does exist, that money exists. And is that?
Is that internally funded or is that state?
No, that's what the state gives us.
Any other questions for discussion?
Yeah, I'll say, I really don't want to give any money back, but at the same time, I recognize that our ability to self-fund any, any balances that exist is probably not practical. So I would, I would support we go through the end of the calendar year, end of December, that would be the end of the last full month that funding was available. Because if I heard correctly, January was a partial, correct?
Correct.
And so the only thing that we would give back would be the remainder.
Right, $13,000.
$13,000.
Anyone else?
I agree with Mike.
Can, can Eva, I, I, I felt like you had a recommendation kind of the other, the other evening. Could, do you, could you share what you think would be most advisable to do?
So personally, I would love to see us feed the children, but unfortunately, I know that's not feasible. So the cleanest route is to end it on December 31st and, and to advise the families that as of January 3rd, when they return back to school, that payments would be accepted and would need to be uploaded into their MySchoolBus account so that their children can eat, or they would have to provide meals for their children and/or highly recommend that they fill out the applications so that they can qualify to see them qualify for free or reduced lunch.
Eva, can you please, I know I've heard this more than anybody and should be ridiculously clear, however, I'd like to hear it again. Could you share the scenario where we would not return a penny or would leave no money on, would spend every possible dollar we can? What, what would, what would that look like exactly?
That has to look like the children can eat until January 10th. On January 11th, payments and/or brown bagging their lunch would have to come back on January 11th.
That's option two.
That's option two.
Are you reading two?
And that would be in the middle of the week. Correct.
Any other discussion?
Am I misunderstanding two? Item two allows us to spend for the middle of the month?
Yes.
Of all the funds, we're not under any obligation to fund.
Right. So it's not really the middle of the month, but it's January 10th for us.
So I would be, I mean, I'm with you. I don't want to leave any money on the table.
I'm with both of you.
Okay.
I, I don't want to leave any money on the table at all. And, and, you know, it just might give people time after the holidays. I don't know, it's so busy. Family are in from out of state, people are sick, just to really get themselves even more together, more notice and, and everything. I, I would prefer to use every penny possible.
I would think that the alternative in the communication dilemma on this is that if we have a Monday, Tuesday and a Wednesday, am I correct that Wednesday is the 10th? Is that right? Wednesday is the, I'm sorry, the 11th, the 10th, okay, so the 10th is a Tuesday. So that gives us an opportunity for the 2nd through the 6th and then again on the 9th on Monday, the opportunity to communicate in the method that we communicate to the students, different mediums. Mine doesn't listen to me, but I'm certainly, I'm certain you guys do all the things that you're supposed to do, to communicate that, that, you know, come 10th, those are a lot of opportunities that lead up to that. And so we're giving everybody a much, frankly, a better notice that if you told me to remember something on, when do we break, December 24th, that you remember on the 3rd or 2nd when you come back, there's, I don't know, I think, I just think there's a, there's an opposing view to that communication dilemma that we could probably, that I, that I think warrants considering and not giving back that money, because I don't, I don't like the idea of leaving money on the table.
Yeah, we certainly would come up with a communication strategy to make sure that people are aware of how to apply for free and reduced lunch, as well as here's the day where free lunches run out. That would be something that would be communicated frequently and loudly.
Okay, you just answered the question I was going to ask, because free and reduced lunches is going back to the way that you'd be pre-COVID.
Correct.
But people haven't had to worry about that.
Correct.
Okay. So immediately is the time we'll start communicating and I would assume, or as soon as we can get that message cleared and prepared. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other further discussion or questions? Need a motion?
I'm, I would make a motion that we accept option two, which is the one that runs through the 10th and leaves no money on the table.
I second that.
Okay, I got Eric as the motion and Dr. Benson Clark as the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, that was a good discussion, I appreciate that.
Okay, so 12.2C, your student activity reports, the reports as of October 31st, 2022, balanced to the bank accounts. Are there any questions on what information you had in your packet on student activity? And so hearing none, this is on 12.2B, is the second month ever reporting on the short-term investment funds. And as of October 31st, 2022, we had a dividend reinvested of $873.54. Are there any questions on the short-term investment?
Quick question, what is that actual return percentage?
I'm trying to calculate it if I can.
Okay. Okay. Brings us to committee reports. Where are we timewise? We are at 8:50. So what I would like to do is go through the committee reports. So at this point, why don't we, we kind of covered policy, quite a bit of policy stuff, but I'll defer to the policy committee if there's anything that we need to discuss or any updates that they have for us. All right. Moving on to finance, we've also, we've talked about finance, but as far as the lunch is concerned, any finance update or report? Okay, move on to facilities.
We don't have anything new to add. We are still anticipating the completion of a well repairs. On the successfully repaired well, we will then get into discussions on prioritizing opportunities for athletic surface repairs.
I will be able to provide the board my weekly updates, some information about the well timeline and location, which has been approved. Perfect, good news.
Okay. Program, is there anything for programs?
No, we didn't, we did not meet this month.
Okay, thank you. Negotiations.
Yeah, so negotiations met and we are, we are in progress. We are, we are going forward. So we hope to have something to bring to the next board meeting. Superintendent McNamara, is that correct?
Correct. We have a tentative agreement with the administrative group and we will be able to come to the board with that TA for ratification at the next meeting.
We, we feel good about that, so fingers crossed.
Absolutely.
Great. How about Eastcon?
Eastcon's meeting is tomorrow, the annual meeting.
Okay. Thank you for the Eastcon rep, still here, did he leave?
No, he's not.
Okay, anyway, thank you for being here. And then Cabe?
Cabe, if it is okay, I would like for us to maybe report at the next meeting because we just came off of a weekend at Cabe of both Friday and Saturday. It's pretty, was pretty tiring but good. So if, you know, perhaps Mary Sue and Superintendent McNamara and I could just give a brief, brief update, not formal, but at that meeting, would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
Chairman Morris?
I'm sorry, I apologize if you could restate your question.
I, I, we just came off of a long Cabe weekend of Friday and Saturday. So I would like the gift of time for us to process it a tiny bit and present those of us who attended some of the big ahas or great learnings at our next board meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, did I miss anything as far as committee reports? Okay, item 14 turns us to public comment. If you'll bear with me, I'll read our statement again, just to be clear. Heber and Andover and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings are welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act for discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. So at this point, I'll open it up again to those present for public comment. Please, yes, if you could over here. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Oh, is it not out there?
I went online, we are struggling, motion, we're stressed. And I said something to the superintendent and talked last night, and I do appreciate him reaching out to teachers and asking for opinions of what's going on in the school. I did say to him that I'm not saying anything in my opinion. But I felt that by not saying something, it was a success. The climate at Ram is 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 struggling. Teachers need some help. I get concerned, a little bit defensive, when maybe there were some implications that part of the difficulties at Ram are what teachers are doing or not doing in the classroom. And and that makes me a little bit nervous. I can tell you there is no more inclusive or welcoming or open faculty than the ones that you have here working for you. They work endlessly each day to make sure every student feels supported and welcome. And that is part of their their concern with how the unfortunate incidents might be played out. I'll be honest, I waited to make my comments until the media left. I think this is important to discuss on a personal level, and I know how things can be sensationalized, and I do not want that to happen. But the climate is a reflection of the culture. Teachers do not make the climate of climate. And I'll get on my leadership soapbox for a second. Climate comes from culture. Culture is created by leadership. All of you on stage have a responsibility to make sure the culture that you want at Ram is communicated with the building administrators so that they can put that culture in practice into play among the faculty. Climate is a reflection of culture. And if climate is struggling at Ram among the teachers, then that means our culture is struggling at Ram. I think it's fantastic that we brought in a lot of experts tonight, or people from outside the community and within the community, and parents that spoke tonight about the concerns that they have. But I'm disheartened, because this district has 140 experts all on hand, ready to discuss what students need in the classroom. 140. We have experts in math, science, student, I have all that, we have experts in psychology, we have experts in social work, we have experts in student counseling. And so I get very disheartened when teachers are dismissed as just teachers. We are experts. We know what this community needs. We listen to the students every day. Every day. We are the experts, and we want to work in collaboration with the expert in our community and outside to make what happened this weekend never happen again. I will also add, if I'm allowed, that if I told you the things that teachers hear and have endured every day from students in terms of rude, disrespectful language, you would blush. You would absolutely be blown away by the profanity that teachers hear in their class. Now, I'm not going to take this guy for a joke. I'm a pretty rational person. This is a great school, it still is, and I believe it always will be. But teachers hear these things every day in their classes, and it wears on them. It grates on them. We're into November, hardly with the beginning of this year, and teachers are feeling it, and they're upset. What would make you blush even more is probably some of the responses that we get from building administrators when we bring it to their attention. And I respect every single one of them, and they're doing their job to the best of their ability, as we all are. And I believe that. Once you do, we are all doing our best. But it is not enough. No teacher should be told in any kind of profanity where to go or what to do. It should not happen. But we accept it here. Make no make no mistake, we accept it. And the teachers are supposed to take it back to the classroom and carry on with their day. And it is not fair. It's absolutely not fair. So I'm asking for your help. Maybe have a conversation about the culture that we want to reestablish at Ram in light of these incidences and move forward to help create a better climate among the teachers, which in the end will equate a better climate among our students. And we know that. We absolutely know that for sure. If I could just extend my time a little bit longer, something else that's very disheartening to me as the representative of the faculty, we have four teachers resigning tonight. When in the last time in the history of Britain have we ever seen four resignations now? Not my 20 years. And what makes me a little bit upset is that here at Britain, we do have a unique tradition where the board approves resignations. I don't believe that happens in many other districts, to be honest with you. But I think it's a good practice. But when it comes time for discussion, there's nothing. There should be discussion why four teachers are resigning at one time. There should be serious discussion, at least an executive session, at least. Teachers resigning, and they have no other job. It's not like they're leaving to go to another school. They just find that they cannot live here any longer, and they're just leaving. That should be a concern. What's even more concerning is that two of those teachers are teachers of color, and nothing sends a message to other teachers of color that we want to come to Britain. Then those other teachers of color are leaving there. That is problematic. And so I ask the board to ask yourself some tough questions. Let's work with our building administrators. Let's not put teachers in the way of profanity, unacceptable behavior, with just enough response of that there's nothing they can do about. Our administrators support us, there's no doubt about it. Absolutely no doubt, they support us. We know that. But nobody, not not members of the board, not teachers, not building administrators, should be talked to the way that we are on any given day. Any given day. It should not happen. Let's just reset, right? Let's talk about the culture that we want to put back in place at Ram that supports all of our families, all of them, all of them, in light of what happened this weekend, or the last week, rather. And let's reset the climate at Ram so that teachers are more successful in the classroom, students can learn, students feel welcome, and that teachers aren't going home upset every day, looking for other jobs outside of education. Thank you. I know I went over my time. I apologize. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for public comment? I'll ask online, is there anyone online joining us at a hybrid that would like to share a public comment? Eric leaning on you. No? Okay. Thank you. Which brings us to item 15, informational items. Vince, Colin, you have anything you need to share with regard to item 15?
No.
Okay. Is there any questions regarding any of the items, the calendar, both for middle school and high school, as well as the disciplinary report? Okay. At this point, just before we ask about this motion, I need to just cover a practical matter. What's the most efficient way to manage the sound and recording and all that in going from this meeting to that meeting and then back to this meeting? Are we set up that to do what we need?
We have to move the smart board into the other room.
Okay, and then bring it back.
Move the smart board back to finish the public meeting. If we if we can finish the public meeting, but without.
Okay. I need you to tell me what's you can is that is that a is that a difficult?
How many minutes?
Seven?
Six or seven minutes.
That's what we'll do. I don't want to change.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to move to an executive session for the purposes of discussing an attorney-client privileged communication related to the speech in public forum matters in schools, and further move to invite Superintendent Colin McNamara and Attorney Jessica Ritter into the executive session. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
One second, Ben.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Is there any discussion about that motion? Hearing none, we'll go to a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Where's the link, please?
I'll make sure that we reshoot the link back out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, that motion carries, and we are in executive session.